We call to order this special meeting of Nevisota City Council at 4:37 PM. Item two is a workshop discussion on Public Improvement Districts, or PIDs, by Hawes, Hill &amp; Associates. Mr. Weeks?
Mayor, Mayor and Council, I wanted to have a discussion over a Public Improvement Districts and what those are. Not all three-lettered words are bad, and so unlike a municipal utility district, a Public Improvement District is a financing tool that we think is better for new development, that can be used to entice and bring development in. It is one of the ways that we can use some of our tools that we have at our disposal, whether it's the tax increment reinvestment zone, whether it's development agreements, or whether it is PIDs, as a way to meet the developer halfway, or a portion to be able to get some development going. And so Hawes, Hill &amp; Associates, they were the ones that helped us as we put together our TIRS. And if you remember back when David Hawes was here and did the presentation on the TIRS and what a TIRS was, he talked about the Public Improvement Districts and municipal utility districts, and explained the difference and why municipal utility districts are not very good for cities that are expanding. Not that MUDs have their own purpose, and generally those are in rural areas where you cannot be provided utilities, but a Public Improvement District, though it is an additional assessment onto a taxpayer, it has an end date. It's not something that can be renewed. And with that, any time a homeowner wants to pay that off, they can pay it off, and it transfers with that property. And so I'm not going to get into all the details, and we're not going to steal Hawes, Hill's presentation from him, but Scott with Hawes, Hill's here tonight. You had your PowerPoint presentation in your packet. He's going to go over and kind of explain what the special districts related to PIDs are.
Thanks, Jason. That was a pretty good summation of a PID in a nutshell. Mayor, City Council, thanks for having me. Like Jason said, my name's Scott Bean. I'm with Hawes, Hill &amp; Associates out of Houston. We specialize in setting up and managing special purpose districts for real estate development, PIDs being one of them. So with that, I'd like to run through the presentation. This slide is entitled PID Capital Projects. There's actually two types of PIDs authorized under the state law, Chapter 372 of the Local Government Code. There's capital projects PIDs, and there's supplemental services PIDs. What we're talking about today is strictly a capital project PID, which is, like Jason says, is an assessment on each lot in a subdivision to reimburse the developer for a portion or all of the infrastructure costs that goes into developing that lot. A supplemental services PID would be something like additional security, or business marketing, or graffiti abatement, or something, an overlay on top of city services. We're not talking about that. Strictly a capital project element with this PID. So PIDs can be created by cities and/or counties, and again, they're to finance public infrastructure improvements, or assist private developers with new subdivision development. The good thing about a PID is it equally distributes the cost of those improvements over the project and the lots, typically residential. You can do that a number of ways, either by lot, which is recommended, or by square foot or front foot. That way you get a higher assessment with bigger lots. You can do that. It gets complicated, the formulas and the payoffs and things like that. So we always recommend just a straight per lot assessment, keep it as simple as possible, and that's what we're talking about here for this project.
Do you want to go back to the first?
One more. One more. Right there. Okay, so the PID creation process, the developer or the landowner would come to the city with a petition to say, hey, we want to develop this subdivision. We're proposing a public improvement district for the financing of the infrastructure. The petition is submitted to the city secretary's office. It's received by council, and then if council's so inclined, you would hold a public hearing where you would consider creation of the PID. There's two resolutions that are required for that creation. Once those are approved by city council, the PID is actually created, and then there's a little bit of a dead period for there to be protests from people that might not like the idea of a PID. However, there's only typically one landowner. It's the developer, and there's rarely if ever any protests in the process. Once the PID is created, there's a development agreement that lays out the groundwork and the understanding between the city and the developer that says basically, if the developer performs, puts in the infrastructure, that the city will actually levy the assessment on the lots and collect those assessments on behalf of the developer. Once the development agreement is approved, the developer and the PID is created, the developer can then go to work, put in the first section of lots, and then the process still has to come back to city council for approval of the actual assessment, the levying of the assessment on those lots, which is done by ordinance.
Can you do the next?
Okay. So again, the revenue from a PID is an assessment. It's not a tax. It's a set amount. It's a principal amount per lot, let's say $10,000. So typically, they're going to finance that assessment over a certain term. Here, we're proposing a 20-year term. I think the principal amount of the assessment is 17,500, something on that order. Like Jason said, each property owner, when they buy a house in the subdivision, they have the right to pay off that assessment, the principal amount in full, or they can finance the assessment over the term of the PID with interest. Typically, they pay annually. It's a level, set amount. It never goes up and it never goes down. It's the same payment for 20 years, and there's a certainty when the homeowner buys that home that they know the PID assessment, unlike a MUD tax, is not going to fluctuate. It's going to be a set amount, and amortizes just like a home mortgage. So certain advantage to that. Along with the assessment ordinance, levying the assessment on the lots, there's required to be what's called a service and assessment plan, which just gives a term of the assessment, what goes into the assessment, the amounts, and how they're payable, and how they're collected. So that would be brought forward for city council approval as well. So the administration of the PID is strictly the responsibility of the city, city council. There's no appointed board. There's no other entity that would administer the PID. However, the cities and counties are allowed to hire a third-party administrator to do all the heavy lifting and the day-to-day administration of the PID. What that typically involves is because each lot owner has the ability to pay off the assessment at any time, they have the right to call in the city and say, how much is my payoff amount? Cities typically don't want to do that, so they hire a company such as mine to deal with the phone calls from property owners, real estate agents, title companies, things of that nature. And then we keep a rolling tally of who's paid off, how many years have been paid, and if there's a payoff asked for, we would create a consolidated statement that says, you've made five payments, for instance. You still have 15. Here's your principal balance. If you want to pay it off, you can write a check to the city, and you're done with the PID. I already talked about the development agreement. That's a really important agreement between the city and the developer, because it lays out the understanding and the framework of the PID. And the city can put additional requirements in there. They can say, it has to be a minimum home price of X. You have to bid your infrastructure like it were a city project. We want to publicly bid. We don't want anything solicited. We want contractors hired through public bid. Basically, anything the city wants to see in the project. And in return, the developer would agree to that, and then the city would say, okay, we're going to levy the assessment, collect those amounts, and reimburse you for the infrastructure. And that's really a PID in a nutshell. We try and keep it as simple as possible. There's other PIDs that issue city debt, and there's a lot more involved. This is what's called a cash flow PID, and this is the only thing that we do. We like that the property owner, the future homeowners, understand what the amounts are and that they'll never change. They understand exactly what they're buying into. And there's a disclosure notice that lays all that out prior to the home purchase.
Where does the money come from to start with?
Well, the developer advances it and builds the infrastructure with the assurance that he's going to get a portion of that money back through the PID, correct?
And my understanding is the bank actually gives them credit for the PID portion, correct, Chairman? Yeah. So why are we here? And so the reason we're having the discussion is, so as you know, Altamira is the development that's going to be out across from Cow Talk. This is just one of those financing tools in order for to get the deal over the finish line there. As part of, you can put a PID over the top of a TIRS, which is the plans for this. It will help out with the infrastructure cost. And as Scott was talking about, the next item on your agenda is we're going to talk about a development agreement. So you'll kind of see what development agreements are going to look like, and it is. It's, the developer's getting something, and the city's getting something. And so that's what the development agreement shares as part of it. Unlike a MUD, it's controlled here locally, where a MUD, you don't have any control over the MUD.
They have like a separate board on something like that, right?
Yeah, so this is the city's control of it, where the MUD has its own separate board, and they might not even live here. And so also why we're here is, there is another developer that's looking at wanting to come into the community and looking at the same thing, doing a PID. And again, it's ways to get, with land cost up, with the cost of construction going up, it's a way to try to get that, shrink that amount so that actually development can occur. And so these aren't tax abatements. These are assessments onto the property owner. And they go away after 20 years. Where a MUD is a MUD tax. It's based on valuation, and it's just a separate tax. And with that, as that debt gets down, they can refinance the debt, and sometimes the MUD tax never goes away. This has an end date, it's 20 years. And so there is an end date for this. So if you have any questions, we definitely, this is an opportunity to either ask staff, because we've been, like we said, we've been working on this. We're right in the middle of trying to bid out the water well, water tower, and the water projects for this. And so we're going to need to start moving this along, and wanted to have someone come from Hawes, Hill, and talk to you about what a PID is, what its benefits are, and how we can use this as a development tool in the future for other developments.
So this PID amount, it would be on top of the payment of the loan?
So it depends on the homeowner, how the homeowner wants to structure when they really get their assessment. So they either will pay the assessment annually, or they can pay it all at one time when they purchase their home. Those are options that they have. If they pay for it advanced, then there's no interest charges. So there's interest on those. That's what he was talking about. So you have your principal amount. You have the interest attached to it on an annual basis. So when you pay your city, school, and county tax, you'll have this assessment that'll be another portion of it. And law states specifically, when homeowners are going in there, there are certain regulations that we have to, or that the home builders actually have to disclose to home buyers about this additional assessment. They are in a PID, and they're going to have this. As he was talking about the administration of this, this is an annual disclosure. We have to put in our audit report, so that we have to put in there what the assessment was, what the balance is. We have to put all those things in there.
But essentially, this is not affecting the city's credit line?
No, sir. No, sir. This is all on the developer. So the developer, it is, so again, what they're going to use the PID for, they're going to, the PID and the TIRS is going to help pay for the infrastructure cost. Infrastructure, I'm thinking 16 million, I think, or 16, 19? Somewhere through there. Yeah, under 20 million or under. And that will be water, sewer, gas, and concrete streets.
Streets.
So that's what that does. It helps, correct, all that stuff. It reimburses the developer so that that cost is taken care of through the TIRS and the PID.
On the face of it, for the home buyer, this is just part of the cost of the house, right?
Correct. It's a way to, it's a way to at least soften the cost of the home buyer coming in right off the bat. Because if they have to pay the full assessment, plus any infrastructure cost right now, because we don't have impact fees.
Yeah, so this is kind of in lieu of the impact.
This is kind of in lieu of impact fees, so you're not having to charge all that up to the home buyer. Because generally, you don't want to stay below $75. I think is what we talked about for lot costs, way under 75, 50 to 60. Yeah, 60, 65. Anything higher than that is not going to work here in Nevisota, because then you're getting up costs higher than the Bryan College Station. So ideally, you want to be just a little bit under them to bring that clientele here to purchase homes.
Are there PIDs in existence now in the South College Station area?
So there is none in Bryan. Don't know what College Station is doing. Many cities our size, up to, you know, 25, 30,000 population, it is, again, it's a financing tool. It is the preferred tool over a MUD. I will tell you that. It is a preferred tool. And a lot of cities are using TIRS and overlapping over PIDs.
They really can't use this if they're using the, if they're using the impact fees?
Yeah, I don't think so. I don't know.
That's double paying on the thing.
Yeah.
Double dip in there.
Yeah.
I take it from this that it's probably not worth the trouble to do on small projects.
There's a minimum threshold, but we've done, we've done PIDs. The good thing about PIDs, you don't have a board. You don't have a bunch of developer advances to run, all that. So we've done PIDs on residential projects as small as 12 acres, 10 acres.
10 acres, which is, which is?
30 lots, 30, 40 lots. Yes, sir.
But again, you know, my previous position, we looked at a PID, and the reason was is because the land cost was so outrageous. That only way you can get it to work was the PID come in and help pay, to lower that cost of the land down to manageable development. So that's part of it. With land cost increasing, interest rate cost increasing, and just the cost of materials increasing, trying to find a win-win for both the city and the developer. And again, the development agreement will be, you know, like I said, you already know a lot of the things that'll be in the development agreement. We talked about, you know, concrete streets. We talked about reduce the parkland, so we're able to do the water tower, water wells, ground storage.
Sidewalks.
Sidewalks. So those are some great amenities that we factored into that specific development. You know, other developments that might be coming, it could be helped to offset a lift station. So if there's a lift station that needs to be put in place, then you have that opportunity to appear to help reduce the cost of having to put the lift station in.
How would it work if a development is done in phases?
We typically treat the entire project as one cost. That way, every lot is going to have the same assessment. If you break it into phases, there's master costs in the first phase that would have to go to the last phase.
That would make sense. I just.
Yes, sir. So we treat it all as one project.
So is there any downfall to this?
Assuming, which will happen, the disclosure notices are done adequately. There's really no issue. The potential buyer knows exactly what they're signing on for. Those amounts will not change. Everything is controlled by city council, has to come back through here for each phase of assessments. So the development agreement will control that with the developer. So I really don't, there's no downside per se, because there's no debt. The city has not issued debt. The only one carrying the note is the developer. So if he goes slow, he's going to get paid back slower, so.
I think I heard you say that this will be 20 years. Just say if a landowner buys in five years and wants to sell, do the new buyer pay 15 years, or do it fall back to the original 20?
No, they pick up the payment schedule. They'd have another 15 years, the same amount, annual amount.
And they would also know that going in?
Right. The disclosure notice, and we'll record everything in the real property records in Drives County. So every time there's a sale, it'll pop up that you're in a PID. Usually the real estate agent knows that and discloses it, but it will be in the chain of titles as well.
What happens if you're in the foreclosure?
If, I'm sorry.
The foreclosure?
The house or the project?
Either.
Okay.
Either.
Sorry.
It does happen.
Right. If a bank, for instance, takes over the development, they would just receive the PID benefits.
It doesn't go away.
It doesn't go away. And the same with a foreclosure on a home. It would be cured, and at the time, there's a sale, whatever arrears there is, and then it would just move forward on the annual basis.
One of the other, you talk about drawbacks. One thing you have to make, we have to make sure that gets done, is the assessments. So assessments cannot be placed after a home's built.
No.
So you can, but if you build one house, or two houses, then those one to two houses will not be issued the assessment. So it has to be before the houses are built. And so we have to make sure that we do not miss that step on the assessment process.
Right. That's a good point. Each time there's a new phase, we got to come back to city council, redo it, or update the assessment plan, and have the new assessment roll for that additional phase.
How would the assessment differ?
I'm sorry?
How would that assessment differ?
It wouldn't. So if this is a 10-phase project, we're going to estimate the total amount of cost, and what percentage that the developer would give back. And then each lot, 383 lots, each lot will be assessed a principal amount of that total cost, whether it happens in year one or year seven.
From a standpoint of the buyer, the home buyer, most of this is going to be handled through the mortgage company, won't it? I mean, it'll just be on their mortgage bill.
I would assume that they escrow the PID assessment.
Yeah, just like the taxes. They wouldn't take this and pull this out, and just like they don't take the tax out, you pay your tax through the mortgage company.
I assume that most people escrow the PID assessment, just like their school district, city, and county taxes. It does, hopefully, will come as a line item on the county tax bill. And, you know, it just totals up and it gets paid.
I mean, I think from most of their standpoint, they're just looking at what the total amount is, and what their payment, their monthly payment is.
I think that's right.
How you split it up doesn't make much difference. Could you tell us a little bit about your company's experience with this?
Sure. We've personally done dozens of these. And like, the concept is very simple. Occasionally, we do get, you know, when there's payoffs, when there's questions, when there's notices that get missed, which did happen early on. There was no state law that required the new form that the Real Estate Council of Texas has passed. So my company didn't, we didn't miss any, but there have been instances where there's been disclosures that are missed. As long as that doesn't happen, as long as the disclosure's done, and the buyer signs on the line and says, because the notice is very descriptive. It says, here's the amount, here's what you can pay annually, here's the interest rate, and here's the term. If you have any questions, call Hawes, Hill, and they'll call us. So there's been very few issues with the system, so.
Can you say there's state law that established this, like a 380, or, you know, like a?
Absolutely. There's state law that specifically addresses this.
Chapter 372 of the Texas.
Then we would have our own ordinance of our own that established it locally.
Development agreement and that sort of thing, yes, sir.
Right. And that's the big thing, disclosure. Everybody knows. The developer knows, the city knows, the buyer knows, the real estate agent knows. As long as everybody knows, and it's out there, it's not an issue.
It sounds like a great tool to me for the city to use to help to get developers in, and it helps the developer get the bank money that they need to get the job done.
Any other questions, Council? We'll be, like I said, you'll be seeing a PID come to you shortly. So as we work toward Altamira and getting that through the finish line, we'll be bringing that forward to you to move forward with the PID on that. Thank you, Scott. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Item three is a workshop discussion on possible Chapter 380 agreement for Congrove's Estates subdivision.
Mayor and Council, Lupe's going to come up and do the presentation, but kind of wanted to kind of lead into, as we just talked about, development agreements. So Congrove's Estates is being overseen by Cross Trails Development. And so you understand where Congrove's Estates is. That is the portion of Cong Lakes that is vacant right now along the Highway 105, right across from the RV Park that's going in there along Con Lake Drive. And so that property, when it was sold to the developer, developer was unaware of some issues with the lift station, and able to help handle capacity. And so we let them work with, really close with BLIO Engineering to understand what was going to actually be needed there, that a separate lift station wasn't needed. And so they were able to talk to them about what was, what upgrades needed to happen. As you'll remember, part of state law changed not too long ago, I think last year, that now requires, any new developments is going to require, if you do anything that taps into a lift station, you're required to put a generator in. And so in order to get the development across the Phil Gold on this, they didn't come in and ask for a PID. They're just asking for a development agreement with assistance in trying to get that lift station cost down. And so again, a development agreement is an agreement put together where the developer gets something, and the city gets something. So it's not, unlike our last workshop where the developer come and want to do some rental property, and the only thing we were getting was rental property on the books. Everything else, we were having to give away. That's not what this is. This is, they're getting something, and what are they getting? They're getting around $123,000 from us based on, as the lots become built, and they get their COs. And what do we get out of it is, you know, kind of equal. And so I'm going to let Lupe go through the presentation here that you should have had in your packet. And if you have any questions, Lupe and I can try to answer. I don't see, we did let the developer know about it. Don't know if he ever responded.
Yeah, I don't think he's going to come tonight. Mr. Mayor, City Council, good evening. Lupe Diostato, Development Services. I just wanted to give you a brief update. As Jason mentioned, these development agreements, ideally, you know, they're incentivizing the developer to provide the city something more than just a baseline, right? So for any new subdivision, we have minimum baseline requirements, you know, utilities, roads. The idea behind these agreements is to get something a little bit better. As Jason said, the big, one of the big cost factors in this project is the lift station. So that's going to, that's going to take most of the, most of the development agreement amount. So briefly, just to go over the bullet points, these are the, these are the things that the developer is going to deliver, which is HOA-owned and maintained open green space. It includes walking trails as well. Total development is 146 single-family homes. As Jason As Jason mentioned, there is some upgrades to the lift station and the force main that are gonna be serving this development. That includes a little bit of extra capacity outside of what it needs for this development. Exterior masonry requirements, that's a big one. So, for example, you know, the state did away with cities regulating building materials. Jim Hassel in Phase 1, 2, and 3, he himself set the standard in the zoning, in the zoning laws for those, for those phases to require masonry. However, that's not required. So, this is another item that is being offered above and beyond the bare, you know, the bare bones minimum. Connecting sidewalks to Phase 2, obviously, this is not a, this is, it is a Pecan Lakes Phase 5, but you know, without, you know, with a different name. So, it'll connect sidewalks to Phase 2 of Pecan Lakes, as well as a $15,000 fee, sidewalk fee for future connection to August Horse. You know, it's really close to that park, so getting those fees is, is an added benefit. And then, there's also some minimum square footage thresholds that have been outlined in the agreement. So, basically, the larger lots, 8,000 square foot or more, they have a 16,000 square foot minimum for the home, and then 14,000 square foot for anything under. So, again, just trying to set a minimum baseline above and beyond what's required.
1400?
Yeah, 1400 for, 1400 square foot.
Not 14,000.
You said 14,000.
Say 14,000? Oh, okay. Yeah.
That's a big old house.
Yes, they're all gonna be mansions now. Yeah, 14, 1400 square feet, I'm sorry.
Can you go to the one right before, the slide right before that?
That one? Oh, you know what?
Yeah, go to it real quick, so you can actually-
I forget that, on my laptop, I'm looking at something different.
So, this kinda shows you, so, when we met with the developer, if you'll see the purple down on the bottom of there, so, we met with the developer and was like, hey, we want a continuation. Those houses already back up to Pecan Lakes Estates itself, so we want some similarity to that. And so, that, those are gonna be three-sided brick homes, so it kinda equal about what's already out there. And then, the green dots are what we call the minimum 1600 square foot. So, those were basically your corner lots or anything that's gonna be very visible from, from the roadway.
Thirty-eight of those.
There's, yes sir, there's, there's thirty, 38 of the, the three-sided brick and 36 of the 1600.
Where's Highway 6 and 105?
Highway 6 is at the top, yeah, well, Highway 105 is at the top there.
Okay.
Now, it doesn't mean, so you'll, so you know, doesn't mean that the homes that are not in, in purple, the home buyer might want all brick or whatever. We're just saying, these are the minimum. So, we put the minimum amounts in there, so that development could work and somehow have some cohesion with the two developments.
So, same that, there's commercial frontage?
Commercial frontage, yes sir. So, that's commercial frontage. So, you'll, so you'll know, over on the left-hand side, that is Pecan Lakes Drive. And so, there'll be two entrances off of Pecan Lakes Drive. And then, at the bottom of your map, it will, you've got Birdie on the left and Eagle View on the right. And so, originally, originally, Birdie, which is on the left, they had the roadway going straight out and connecting directly out through to-
105.
105. However, we didn't want the cars getting up 50, 60 miles an hour on that stretch, and so, we told them, hey, we don't wanna exit there, let's do a cul-de-sac there. So, that's what they, they've proposed there. Then you got over on Eagle View, a short stint up, and then they have to jog over in order to get with the, I don't even what street they're proposing there. It gets out to 105. And then, you're correct, that'll be a commercial, commercial property out on Highway 105. They're gonna do sidewalks, that little portion that's, that's connecting to 105, that will have sidewalks on both sides that will connect to the commercial. Once the commercial piece comes in, then sidewalk, the commercial businesses will be required to put sidewalks.
And so, going back, again, those are the items that, that are on the developer to do on the development agreement. What the city is contributing, it's like Jason mentioned, that, that lift station upgrades and it's fairly costly, so it's a little over 123,000. And then, there's another portion of it too, that's parkland fees. You know, we have, I know Jason can probably touch on this a little bit more, but you know, we have a lot of parks and they need a lot of upgrades and things to look at in future, future programming and things of that nature. So, incentivizing a private developer to do an HOA run, owned and maintained green space is a good middle ground right now until, you know, other things are situated. So, in saying that, obviously, the, our current parkland requirements, they, they're pretty explicit. Every 48 homes is an acre. Obviously, that's not being provided here. And so, that shortfall of acreage and possible development on that green space, it equates to about $71,000. So, that's, that's being waived. That's, you know, cash, not won but not lost, and that's just part of the agreement. And then, there here's just a breakdown of the, of the total cost of the agreement, 123,000. So, it includes a backup generator for that lift station. It's critical whenever there's a loss of power. Of course, the lift station design and engineering, some upgrades to the pumps themselves, and then an extension of the force main to get that lift station pumping into another manhole. Currently, the manhole that receives this lift station, force main, and for Phase 3 is the same one, so we wanna kinda split those up. So, that's why the extension's necessary. And that's, that's really it. That's the big highlights of them. It's important to have that breakdown too. So, it's not 100% on the city with the lift station. The developer is providing some percentages, but these are the numbers that, at least so far, have been negotiated.
And ideally, I think we worked it out where it's $1,000 per home, and so, it'll, they'll get reimbursed when the first 100, fully reimbursed after the first 124 homes are built. So, you'd be about three-quarters of the way done.
So, that's what the payout is, yes sir.
It'd be time to generate that before we have to.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it wouldn't be all at once. I think the developer requested in the last email, doing a phased reimbursement. So, he's dividing it into four phases, 146. And so, every, at the end of every phase, once all the homes are built, 1,000 times how many of our lots it is. So, it'll probably take two, two to three years to do full, full payback.
Lupe, can you go back to the 380 agreement financial breakdown?
Yes.
Can you explain the sentence to $1,000 waived of the parkland fees? What would we actually be waiving green space or?
Yes, sir. So, currently, our subdivision ordinance requires that any new, any new subdivision, right, residential subdivision, provide a park and green space or a combination thereof. The current rules are for every 48 rooftops, the developer has to provide one acre of parkland. And all of, all of that dedicated parkland has to be dedicated to the city once the infrastructure is complete and in the ground. For this situation, what the developer is asking is a significant reduction of that requirement, and then any fees. So, normally, anytime you have a shortage, so let's say you build a subdivision with 48 new homes, well, that's only an acre, right? They only have to provide an acre. But if the developer is only providing half an acre out of their required one acre, then that half-acre shortage has to be paid for via fees. And there's, and there's two components to the fee. For the land that you're, that you're short on, right, the half-acre that you're short, and then the, the improvements that are, that are supposed to be on that half acre. So, you know, park equipment, sidewalks, benches, whatever, whatever the case is. So, so those two fees, the shortage of land and the lack of improvements on that land that's, you know, isn't there, those, those two equate to that cost, 71,000. So, if the developer said, hey, you know, or if the city said, hey, we're not gonna waive that fee, then obviously, that would significantly increase the, the land of the, of the green space. And actually, it's, you can see what's being provided here. It's not the best picture for it, but there's, there's almost an acre here. So, total this development, if he was meeting all the requirements, it would be a little over three acres for 146 lots. What is being provided is roughly an acre here, and then there's another small, small green space area by the mailbox area here. And I believe that's, I believe that's it. It's these two areas.
No, there's one up there.
That corner.
Right there.
These, no, no, those are all lots now.
Yeah.
Those are lots too?
Yeah.
There's just not a house on it. Oh, those are yards, never mind.
Yeah, that's private yards, yeah. So, ideally, it's, it's really just this area and here. In total, it makes up a little over an acre. So, obviously, there's two, 2.8 acres short, right, per the standards? And that's what those, and that's what that equates to in fees, is 71,000, based on our current ordinance. So, the agreement is saying wa, wa, waiving of those fees and requirements, and in return, we're getting a private HOA area that's, that's not city-owned and maintained, but it is accessible to the public.
So, I guess my question really is gonna boil down to, are we going against the ordinance or are we changing the ordinance?
So, through the development agreement, you're allowed to do the variance. And so, we, this, last week, we met with the Parks Board. We, we talked to the Parks Board about all of the parks going, that we have going on. The city is not in, in the position of taking on any more parkland at all. We've gotta be able to maintain what we have and start working on the parks that we have. We just were given 10, 11 acres out of Pecan Lakes out there. I mean, I, it's gonna be a long time before Pecan Lakes is able to see a park out there. There's so much work that needs to be worked on with our current park system that I don't see that happening for a while. So, ideally, we won't take on any more park land to have to oversee, mow, maintain. And in fact, you're, you're correct, one of the things we are going to look at pretty shortly is to start looking at the actual parkland ordinance and how that, how we come to those amounts and how we, how all that's calculated. It's one of, one of our things that we're gonna talk about when we do our comprehensive plan, is, is have discussions about parkland. But so, you also know, the one acre that Lupe showed you at the very bottom, staff was very particular about making sure that that is not developed, that it becomes open space area. If you, if he can point, can you point right there in the corner piece right there? So, that, the corner piece right there is where the drainage ditch occurs currently for development.
Yeah, for all the Phase 1, 2, and 3.
Yeah, yeah, correct. That's where the, that's where all the drainage happens. Now, you're adding 145 homes. We will work with our third-party engineering firm, Blil, to confirm the calculations when the, when they submit this to us to look at that drainage piece, whether it's gonna need attention or retention piling there. But until, till we find out for sure from our engineer, we didn't want anything put down there, 'cause we have a feeling that's gonna end up being detention.
If it ends up being retention, then that's a do away of green space, correct?
Well, it, it'll be somewhat, 'cause I think it's detention, so it's not gonna be with water in it right now. What it would look like, we don't know. But it will reduce the, the green space part. But again, city doesn't wanna maintain any more, any more land out there, and then we have to, 'cause we got 10 acres that we're already having to.
Well, I mean, with this particular-
Well, H-108, did H-108 take care of that?
Correct. Yeah, so this, all these properties here, no matter what happens, is gonna be HOA maintained.
I would think with this particular project, it's probably not as important, because we're gonna connect it to August Horse.
Yeah, that, I was about to bring that up.
Yeah, so, so the connection, so staff is already looking, trying to figure out a way to go down Fairway to put a sidewalk on the west side. We can't go on the east side. Love to have it there along the fence line at the airport, but I don't know if you were actually to go out and, and look. I know that John, our graduate engineer, took some photos of what that looked like, and it looked like a, a lot of water between the road and the fence line. So, we're gonna go to the, the west of that. On this connection here, so there will be a requirement for who, the commercial pieces that's not outlined there along-
Yeah, over here.
There's already a sidewalk that goes from the corner of that development up to 105, already there. So, the commercial pieces will have to connect it straight across along 105. We don't have the arrow up, but if you'll, if you know, on the, that little stub out where the road's gonna be, that's a commercial piece there, and then you've got a resident, a resident area that's right there, and then you have where the gas station's going. So, the $15,000 is, would be the cost to put a sidewalk across that residence easement area. So, that's what the 15, that's why, that's how we came with 15,000, was to get that connection from this development along 105 to the gas station, and then we'll figure out how we're gonna get from the corner of 105 and Fairway to tie into August Horse walking trail.
Is that something we can just put in future budget to?
Future year budget, you know, like I said, we've got some sidewalk funds available that we're gonna figure out how we can connect on the west side of Fairway. But we, I just don't, we don't yet, we haven't looked at that yet, but we are gonna look at it in the next coming budget. Correct.
It's a fur piece of going down, down to August Horse.
And within your packet is the draft development agreement, something that Legals worked with us on. That way, you can kinda get familiar with what a development agreement looks like for development, 'cause the, this would be a similar type of agreement that we would do for a pit, same type of language in there, just wouldn't, wouldn't reference lift stations and generators.
That's right, yeah. Just, just a reminder, Mayor and Council, a couple of sessions ago, the state legislature changed the ability of the city to require masonry and building materials on homes. So, this really is an enhancement to what you could legally require. So, you know, providing incentives is how cities nowadays are really getting these developments to do masonry and other upgrades, so.
Well, and I think buyer's expectation is there too.
Yes, sir.
And especially when you have all of those that'll be surrounding all the ones on the inside, they're not gonna wanna go, I mean, I would think at least, from a buyer's standpoint, you would probably want the, it to be built in the same general type of construction.
From a fire standpoint, I don't know, now with the hardy plank and everything-
Well, hardy plank's same as brick, same thing as-
Does it count as masonry then?
As far as insurance goes.
Doesn't have the appearance.
It doesn't burn.
It was the aesthetic feel for the neighbors.
So, this development agreement, if, if you don't have a lot of issues, you're gonna be seeing this come fairly quick. This development is ready to go. They have already bid out their project. They are waiting on the development agreement and amending the PUD for this project, which they would like to do simultaneously, and starting this project ASAP. So, they'll be, if, if everything goes great, they'll be turning these, turning dirt this year, hopefully by Sunday.
Wow.
Uh, they've already selected builders, StyleCraft and-
I think it's Ranger.
Ranger Homes.
Yeah, Ranger, yeah.
Ranger and StyleCraft Homes.
I guess since this is a workshop, I'm allowed to ask this question here. So, on all subdivisions now, we would not be alone in the park space?
Well, so, if you have a, if you have, I'll give you an example. The 1,200 acres that's outside the city limits, if that, if they decided they were gonna be in the city limits and ask us, 1,200 acres, we need to look at park, parkland. Yes, sir. But 100 acres or less, we need to start really looking at, what do we wanna do there? And that's what Lupe and I were talking about. We really need to bring back to P&amp;Z and have that discussion about park station general, and what do we wanna do? Yes, sir.
And plus, this, this out here has a ready-made park that's within a reasonable distance.
Correct.
You're talking about August Horse?
Uh-huh, yeah. It just so happens.
So, let's, let's take the similar situation, the development, that came to you at the- So let's, let's take the similar situation, the development, that came to you at the last workshop, the, the rental homes, along Stacy Road and Wade's Way there. So would you want them to put parkland? It's right next to a park. And so th- those are kinda conversations we need to make sure our ordinance is addressing. When's it a good time, when's it not? 1,200 acres, yeah, you, you, we wanna really have discussions about what parks would look like there, as well as public institutions such as schools.
A school, yeah, exactly.
I was thinking that, in a 1,200 acre, outside of the city limit type thing, I would think that the district would need an elementary school added.
Correct.
And that would count towards the parks.
And so, and so examples of, of when you, when you have, if the 1,200 acres was in the city limits and it, part of it is in our TERS, if, if a developer wants the use of those funds and wants the city to do a PID and enter into a development agreement, that development agreement will say, you gotta put X amount of parkland, you've gotta put X amount of property for public institutions, for schools. Those are the type of things you can put in those development agreements that they require. But I think, I think staff and, and P&amp;Z and Council need to have a discussion about parklands in general. And, and I know when I first came, we talked about it, but we really need to have that discussion fairly soon before these developments start occurring.
And that's what the, hopefully, the comprehensive plan is gonna look at it in the big picture.
Yeah. Well, there's, there's a need, there's a need in various parts of the city for small neighborhood parks. It, August Horse Council is, is a big project, but it is not a neighborhood park. There isn't a neighborhood that, that it's easy to get from to.
Mayor, can I answer a question?
Yeah, sure. You wanna just come up to the podium?
Oh, that's correct. You're not shy about that.
Write your name and
Connie Clemens, 300 Hillside Street in Evosota, Texas. I was just wondering if some, if you could explain Article VII in the tax levy. If I interpret that correctly, that means, that appears that there would be a tax increase.
Connie, with that, let me turn there, but what that addresses
Page Five, Article Seven.
All that's saying is that if there are any funds that are attributable to this development, that there will be a sufficient source of revenue for that, whether it's existing funds, you know, current funds, or if there is a tax that's necessary to support this, then, you know, that's just gonna be part of the operating budget of the city. The, the main purpose of this particular section is to prevent it from being considered a debt, because a city cannot enter into an agreement that obligates funds beyond the current fiscal year unless there's a, unless it's paid from current funds or from another lawful source. And so what this really does is prevent this agreement from being considered a debt that could be, that it could be challenged as an unconstitutional agreement.
But are there sufficient funds?
That's
That's what will, it will be budgeted.
Yeah, so it'll be paid out of, it'll be paid out
The city's not gonna issue any, any debt to, to do this.
Which, which if you read through that entire, I can certainly get with you after the meeting to walk through this with you, but there's language in here that says that if, if the, if the obligation that's created by this agreement is payable from current revenues, then that is one of the lawful sources. And if it's payable from current revenues, it's not considered a debt, and therefore prevents it from being challenged as an unconstitutional debt that extends beyond the current fiscal year.
Okay. Well
I hope that makes sense to you.
Well, that's legalese. I guess basically
It's legalese, you know, some of that legal mumbo jumbo.
Right, right. Basically, I was under the impression several years ago that if we grew, that the burden, the tax burden would be spread out and it would be smaller for all of us, but that's not been the case. As people are moving in and there's new houses, it seems like the rest of us are bearing the cost of that and our taxes are going up. And to me, this just seems like yet another project that I'm gonna be paying for, and, and I don't live there. And I can't, at the moment, I can't run my dishwasher and the shower at the same time. I mean, you know, I've got issues over there with my water pressure, which I hope the water tower will take care of, but anyway, I'm just concerned about my debt increasing as we grow, and, and that's not what I had hoped to see, that I thought that the burden would be shared. So, thank you.
And Mayor and Council, just so you'll know, so average home value out there is around 300,000, it's 145 homes. At our current tax rate, just the total tax rate, it's around 227,113 dollars of additional tax. So within the first year of, of it being completely 145 homes, it, it will pay for itself, the amount that we're paying.
But that's not this year.
Yeah, that's correct.
Will it continue to pay for the improvements and the upgrades and the replacements and the sidewalks and the streets and all of that 10 years from now?
No. Well, no. The, the, the amount of infrastructure maintenance that needs to be done on a regular basis has not been done quite some time, and that's why we issued the $10 million to do the current project. We have now, over in, Old Town is what we're calling it, I think? Old Town, Old Town, Midtown, whatever we wanna call that, that area, that is the reason that we're, we're having to try to catch up. And we're playing catch-up, and we're gonna continue to have to play catch-up for quite some time. With all of the, the utilities that we just did, that we're in the process of doing over there, it's gonna be Public Works' responsibility to start maintaining those valves and those lines and not wait 30 years before we start, try to start maintaining them again, so.
80 years.
So we, it, it is catch-up, and we're all gonna have to share in, in the burden, unfortunately.
But, but we're trying not to spread the burden of the new projects
Correct.
Into the present situation.
Again, the, the development, this development agreement, unlike the PID and the TERS, there ideally was, development agreement is, is going to help lower the cost of the, per lot, so the developer actually can come in here and actually develop the, the lots. If not, there is, you know, anywhere from $5,000 to $10,000 difference, and that make the, the home builders not even wanna come. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Lupe.
That's all I got in here.
All right. Well, we will adjourn the special meeting.